My name is Jeff Loewen. Sorry, something just popped up on my screen there. Just we're just kind of curious and understanding what kind of continuing education the city was looking for? And what the intent or purpose was beyond the city licensing? Obviously, you guys have an idea of what that is and we were trying to understand and Jeff is kind of a thoroughfare of you guys to us. So we just wanted a little more understanding of what your intent or purposes and you know, why you're interested in doing this with the electricians?
All right. Good question. I don't know who originally posed this question. Was it Johani or?
Yes, it was me.
All right, go ahead, Johani.
So I'll explain. Hi, good evening, gentlemen. So I'm part of the nominations committee. So when we're interviewing folks to serve on boards, to organizations and commissions, and we've done, I think, the electricians, we've done the plumbers, I'm not sure we've done plumbers yet. But I'm always curious to find out if locally do we have institutions or areas where anyone who would like to become an electrician can do so? And also if there's requirements for them to further their education to become masters electrician? Is that available and accessible locally? Because I think in some of our interviews or conversations, I've been informed that you have to leave the county, I think, to be able to obtain additional education. So maybe I'm mistaken, but if you can clear that up for me?
Yeah, actually, I mean, our apprenticeship wise, and I think, you know, I'm with the IVW. Ours is five years. I think the state is actually required as four years under a state certified apprenticeship program to be eligible to take a test. And this is kind of what our question was, is that if we would change into doing something like that, we'd actually have to restructure our whole plan documents, because that's not what our board is set up as. We're there to make sure that they meet the requirements and we share those requirements with any applicant that comes in to take that test. There's many avenues and apprenticeship programs that they can become part of. I know our local alone reaches out to inner city between Lancaster, Berks and Schuylkill. We are involved with a lot of that opportunities to do that, to extend our apprenticeship. But I think what we're asking is two different questions, because we were under the impression that you were looking to do some kind of further education for our electricians that are already maintain the electrical license or a master's license. So you're looking more towards apprenticeship or how to get be eligible to become a journeyman or a master electrician?
Yes, and if there were opportunities to do it locally, being that we have so many universities and colleges locally, there was an opportunity to support, you know, local community members that may have an aspiration to become masters electrician or master plumbers and so on and so forth.
Yeah, most of your applications are not going to be really able to be obtained through a college or a trade school. Even Thaddeus Stevens doesn't meet the requirements, because you need 8,000 hours on job training with the actual Jeff might be able to answer me a little bit better. I think it's like, is it 480 hours of classroom training? So it's actually more of an apprenticeship than just go to a college, because you're not getting the hands-on and the theory at the same time. If that answers your question. I mean, we can we can extend the information out there if people contact the board or the city to what they need to do, but like RAC, I think, offers some classes, but you're not going to meet the requirements, you know, to be able to take the test. Your Thaddeus Stevens, I think they offer a two-year program. It's two years of classroom. They get a certification, but it really meets no on the job training certification. And I don't think it even, it might need the classroom hours, but not all the subject itself. So I mean, to extend that information out to what they need to do. I know apprenticeship training and a lot of that is, it's a thing thrown out there a lot right now, but it's really watered down and people need to understand the training requires, it requires 8,000 hours on job training with a master electrician. And you also need those classroom hours to get the theory to have the understanding. So I mean, we could extend out where they could get that information, but the electrical board themselves only acknowledges or reviews who's actually required to take that or acceptable to take that test that meets that requirement.
All right. Any additional questions or comments? All right. Well, at least we cleared that up. We appreciate Jeff and Jeff coming in and giving us your understanding of it. I appreciate the insights as well. So if you have any other comments, we appreciate your time and you did the good work. Go, Johani.
Yeah. So where would someone find or obtain that information? In terms of those apprenticeship programs, where do they go?
If they're interested, I mean, we actually reach out to a lot of the stuff in the inner city to enter our apprenticeship. There is the ABC School. They can actually contact any electrical contractor. And they'll actually, and I forget the exact terminology, but they actually get carried through with an apprenticeship. They have to be certified. The contractor has to put that apprentice in with the state and then they have to get them to schooling. And there's numerous schools. So usually it's more done through the contractor or our local unions. We do that as well. We reach out a lot of extended hands to do that. I know I personally met in with the, some, a bunch of inner city students that were possibly interested in, and we have brought in apprentices that way as well, you know, out of the city themselves, but you know, it's, basically you gotta contact an electrician, like a contractor, and they'd have to actually sponsor you to do that. So there's, I don't know, probably 30 contractors. And if anybody would have any questions, we could get some information through our board and put something together for you as well.
And the same goes to anyone who wants to become a master electrician?
Yeah.
Same process?
You actually have to work an extra two years in the field after you pass your journeyman's test to take that. So your master electrician's on your own. It's all your requirements to get the journeyman license and then it's two more years of working, then you're eligible to take the test for master electrician. So you don't really need any sponsorship for that, but the journeyman level allows you to get your years into to take your masters.
All right. All right. Well, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. And the information is good to know. So thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right.
Wonderful night.
You too. We're going to move on council. The next item is Bill regarding the increase, the increase in the salary for the deputy chief of police to 101, 757 and 4 cents. I know this was discussed, I think, last week. Are there additional comments or questions? Remember, we're not getting into personnel. This is strictly about the increase itself. Yes, Lucine?
Yeah, Jeff, I think that because of the last meeting and the level of or volume of questions that followed this, if other members are interested, it might behoove us to call a executive session to really talk through some of the questions that fellow counselors had. I spoke briefly with our solicitor, because we had so many questions coming and asked, you know, because it's a personnel matter, if that's
Yeah, I just want to be, yeah, I just want to be careful, because I don't want to get into an executive session talking about performance or perceptions of performance, because that's not really our our purview anyway. If there's questions about this specific increase, the amount of the increase, why it's allowed, why it isn't allowed, that's public discussion. I don't see a need for, unless somebody's telling me there's a need for an executive session. There's no, I'm not hearing of any red flags or anything like that. So I just, but we're not, we're not going to get into performance. We're not even familiar with performance. So in this case, so is there a specific questions around this increase? I believe we're contractually obligated to it. Just like the chief? And you know, you have done it?
Okay, I would, I would ask historically, just briefly, tell us what other deputy chiefs have made. Is this in tandem with their, with their salaries? And I know that maybe a couple were a few years back in terms of, you know, possible living, things like that. But does this, is this in uniform with, in uniform base? Salary increase, as we've seen with other deputy chiefs, I'm thinking to tell about others along the way. I like a historical perspective. Yes, that's
Does anyone have that handy?
I don't have that handy, but I'm certain I could research that. I know that what we're doing with this piece of legislation is we're being consistent. The same percentage was given to the chief, and so now we're giving the same percentage to the deputy chief. But I will be happy to research what was done in the past. Obviously predates us in this administration, but I'm happy to do some research on it.
All right. Additional questions?
Yeah. So I just wanted to clarify, this was more of a process thing. Is there anyone else within the department that is owed an increase? That's a question.
Not, I don't believe so. No, this would be, I think, as it stands right now, all the the, everyone that's a current FOP member, and I don't want to get, I want to be careful, because I know Strad has a particular viewpoint on using that term, but I think as it stands right now, Chief Tornelli and Deputy Chief Ruiz are not currently under the FOP contract. And we did an ordinance in April to bring Chief Tornelli under, and we're doing the same thing for Deputy Chief Ruiz now.
Well, then I have a question regarding the actual ordinance, because it reads retroactive to 2020. And I don't, is that correct? Or is it 2021? Because when were they appointed?
There is, there, there is an appointment in, I believe, June or July of 2020, and the union, there's a memorandum of agreement, and then the collective bargaining agreement that was recently passed were both retroactive. So we're just doing everything consistent with the way those contracts
So even though we're in 2021, and obviously the budget for 2020 was approved, done with, we moved on, it goes all the way back to 2020?
Correct.
I understand, Johani. There may have been funds budgeted in 2020 as well to accommodate for that. They just were never encumbered, because the increase wasn't issued at that time. So.
I mean, I remember the process and like the budget itself and how we, you know, worked through it to get things approved. And I don't recall there being that money allocated back. So that's why I'm curious to understand why it goes retro to 2020. If one, they were appointed in 2020 and there was already a budget set, and I believe the, the the, oh gosh, what is the word? The contract negotiation, I think, had been extended. And then
Well, just to give So Johani, sometimes these things are budgeted and not issued at the time that they were budgeted, and sometimes they're not budgeted, but it's determined that they need to be issued. And again, the budgets, you know, it's a blueprint, but it's not a locked-in document. So it does have some flexibility. The question here becomes, you know, is this an entitled increase? And when does it go back to? If it was budgeted in 2020, we, you know, we assume that unused money in the fund balance anyway. And if it wasn't budgeted in 2020, at least for that portion, then it's something we're, you know, we're going to use part of this year's money towards, to your point. But I think the real issue here is, you know, is this an entitled increase? And when should it go back to? I think your question about 2020 is a good question, but what I'm hearing from the administration is that this is attributable back to 2020. Are there any other comments on this issue?
Jeff, Marcia.
Yeah.
Just a clarification. So the reason this is occurring is there was action that was taken through the union contract that also made the chief and the deputy chief eligible for this percentage of the increase. It doesn't have to do with the personalities of the people that hold the position. It has to do with the position itself. Now, you need council approval, just as we gave to the chief for this position.
Yeah, that's exactly right. It's just like when they ratified the contract with the FOP. I mean, even though it's ratified, we still have to approve it. And that's, you know, this is kind of ancillary to that. But yeah, we're still approving the increase.
And to, yeah, to a point that you made, Jeff, and I just want to clarify it, so it's out in open discussion. If it is an issue of any employee with performance evaluations, let's say a council member is concerned about a performance evaluation, that's not really within our purview. Am I correct? It's really for the administration to be conducting those performance evaluations and making determinations of salary.
That's absolutely correct. It's very dangerous for us to be in the middle of performance appraisals at any level, even at the whisper level. It just sets up problems. So we're not involved in employee performance at all. Now, we could be at the director level, you know, you could, you know, where we do some approvals, but you know, that's even, that's even pushing it. But at the employee, employee level, absolutely not. You know, we don't, we have to stay very, very distant from that. Or we set up problems. Again, imagine the city government where every time there's a an upset employee and they want to come lobby three or four members of city council, you've just got a torn up government. So it can't, it can't function like that. And that's why we have professionals.
Look at the irony of that, Jeff. We decide on raises. Yeah, we can't have any, any.
Well, we don't.
And I understand that's our form of government. I'm not
Yeah, but we don't decide. We follow the guidance of the administration.
But we still are the ones that
We have to give approval, because we control the funds, but we do not recommend raises. We do not recommend firings.
They are recommended to us without our having a hands-on thing. And I'm not disputing it. That's our form of government. But I'm saying it is ironic that we're the final arbiters when we have no say. And again, it's our form of government.
All right. Any other comments on this specific ordinance? If not.
Jeff, it's Johani. I just want to make sure that the decision that's being made coincides with how the ordinance is written. Because again, section one of the ordinance says upon evaluation of the mayor of Redding, based out of the deputy chief of police area shall increase to $101%. However, this wasn't based on an evaluation. It was based on an actual contractual agreement increase, was it not?
I just want to make this clear. There's, it's more of a consistency issue. I don't know. My, my legal opinion is that frankly, it does, it's not that neither the chief nor the deputy chief were part of the union contract. That's part of becoming the chief, part of becoming the deputy chief. And that's what I said when we were discussing this about the chief, and I mentioned this last week, is what we have is a consistency issue, and we have two longtime Redding police officers who have risen through the ranks and have become the chief and deputy chief. So I think it encourages, or better put, it doesn't discourage someone who's sitting as a captain or has been with the department for a long time from wanting to leave the union and the benefits that may be part of that contract to become a chief. So that we're not, this wouldn't apply to somebody, or this logic at least wouldn't apply to somebody who's outside, outside of the police department coming in if we were to recruit somebody.
If I could.
The missing element here is specifically for the police and the fire chiefs. If those positions do not get the same level of increase that the bargaining unit contract gets, then the rank and file members of the bargaining unit can end up making more than the chief and or deputy chief, the leadership of that department, which eliminates any incentive from an internal candidate to want to ascend in those positions, because they would make more staying in the rank and file as a captain or lieutenant than they would as the chief. That's why it's necessary for us to honor the percentage increase that the bargaining agreement gave for those positions as well.
Yeah. Yeah. And I understand the rationale and I agree with it. I think what I'm looking at is the wording of the ordinance where a person's name is mentioned. Is that necessary? Or do we just need to state the position? Because we're really increasing, is it the base salary of the individual or the base salary of the position?
It's the position. It's the position.
Yeah. Do we need to include the individual's name? And this is just, I'm just trying to be consistent with the council not having the impact on making raises for individuals. We're making, increasing the base salary of the position.
Yeah. So we should be amending the position ordinance, particularly because this is not a department director appointed position. It's not necessary to include their name. I'm sorry, I don't have the ordinance language in front of me. But it's about amending the position ordinance for the deputy chief position.
That was what I would recommend then.
All right. So that can be amended at the table. If you want to clean that up when we vote on it. Okay. Donna?
On top of that, the name is, the last name is wrong.
It's Ruiz. Yeah.
Ruiz, not Ortiz.
Ortiz is what I saw last week. Yeah.
Yeah. And also, and it just seems, it just seems to me that while it's coming to us for a vote, we're almost, we almost have to vote on this affirmatively, correct? We don't really have, there's no, there's no
Well, you never have to do anything affirmatively. If you have sound reason not to, then you certainly raise the arguments, but I don't think in this specific case, there's, I'm not hearing any red lights and hearing a lot of
You know, and I just, I just would like, again, to see the history of salary in that position. I mean, we've already, it's already the salary that it is for that position that's been ongoing, but again, it may be prudent for us going forward to see what all these base salaries are. You know, was it much higher than a previous deputy chief? If so, why? When the person was drawn? I don't know. I'm just asking those questions. That's why I'd like to see that historical background. And I think it's, as we go into budget, we should consider that for all positions. What is the historical background? Is administrations change? You know, valuations change? Different.
And I think the point is well made, Donna. And we do, I think we typically do, and we also try to take in the economic climate and the job market. You know, there's a lot of moving parts, but I think we do a relatively good job of trying.
But we have, we have been increasing significantly, and maybe that's part and parcel of everything. But as we're exiting Act 47, let's be cognizant of where we're at and how we can do these.
Yeah, it's a competitive market.
Oh, I understand that. I get it.
Just if I could, though, specific to this position counselor, the historical lookback is going to show that the previous salaries were lower just because of the timing. But if you look at it relative in the back of the contract to what the captain, the lieutenant, and with longevity, those positions make, I think that's the comparison is the adjustment tonight compared with the rank and file, the top level. I think it's the fifth level of longevity relative to that position. And I think the deputy chief has like 25 years with the department. So respectfully, again, moving into a leadership position, you get fixed.
Yeah. Lucy?
Yeah, I agree with Marcia's, you know, approach to removing the name of the individual. So when we see that next Monday, I'd like to see that reflected. And I also agree with Donna that a serious consideration really is to the position ordinance moving ahead as we exit Act 47. I think we're going to have to really look at, you know, the capacity or lack of capacity. And we know the police is an area where we would love to increase and bring more police onto our force, right? So if that's the case, as in other departments, what true impact financially is that going to have for our city as we do our projections and our budgeting? So there, I think they're all good questions.
All right. Additional comments or questions, anyone?
So again, I, you know, I believe that every employee of the city, I mean, should be obviously compensated competitively, right? So I agree with positions and the increases. Again, my pet peeve or my issue is more with the ordinance and how it's written, because we speak of consistency. So consistency has to be across the board. So we are presented with documents that we are required to vote on. And I'd like that whatever we vote on is accurate, as accurate as possible and consistent with what we're discussing. So I would love to see this cleaned up and accurate for when it comes time to voting on it. Thank you.
All right. Additional comments or questions, anyone? All right. Thank you, guys. We're going to move on to the next item. Council Solicitor applications. I believe we have two applications. I don't know if everyone's had a chance to review them. I think we're all familiar, generally familiar with both applicants. We don't, we're not up against a timeline as far as selection, but we should talk about, you know, what the timelines would look like. I was trying to get ahead of this for budget season, so we are actually ahead of the game. You know, so maybe we look at a start date of November 1 or October 1, whatever. Well, probably November 1. Linda, did you want to walk through both applicants and also give us kind of an overview of their costs as well? I believe they're similar in structure. And what I'd like to do is try to stratify that out to what an annual we know what a monthly retainer would be. So let's, yeah, let's just talk through that if you can. Do you have sound?
We're having some issues in the room.
It's like the Judas Priest concert. All right. Let me see if I can pull them up here quick and and do that for us. All right. Whoo, here we go. I just had them and then I lost them. Comment, release, release, propose. Whoa. I had them. I had them. Man. All right, one second. You sent us to him in one email, right?
What?
For the solicitor applicants.
Let me look.
You just sent them to us. I just saw them. Now I can't find them. Hold on. Let me sort for just your name. All right. Oh, here we go. Resumes. All right. So we have Melissa and then Mike. The salary for each position will be negotiated by counsel and attorney selected. Select a hybrid approach, fat rate of 25 to 30 K for meetings ordinance review legal advice, because 175 approximately 10 to 20 plus a separate hour. Yeah, Linda, I don't quite understand this cost breakout. We need to understand this a little better. If you're not in a position this evening to talk about it, we're going to have to defer this to next week. We're not up against a tight timeline, but I would recommend that everyone take some time to review both resumes. And then what we'll do is next week, between now and next week, I'll have a discussion with Linda regarding what costs would look like. Again, with them doing really some of the bare basics and the extended work as we need them to, as we've previously discussed. Anybody have comments at this point? All right. Everyone's okay with us working a little more on the cost breakout? I would like to get like an estimated cost, Linda, between you and I, see what we could project. Be pretty similar under either candidate. But I believe if anybody wants to discuss candidates tonight, we can certainly do that. If you just want to have interviews, we can certainly schedule those as well. Is there a preference?
I budgeted 50,000, and I think under that hybrid approach, that figure should work.
Yeah, I want to dive into that a little deeper.
Okay.
But let's talk about, should we do interviews? Is that the next steps you guys want to do? Everybody all right with that? All right.
Hello, Jeff.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you. I would like to see a budget breakdown as well. And then I guess we can win the entries, but we want to know, we want to make sure that we have the exact amount or the appropriate amounts.
Yeah, I'm going to work on this. I'll work on a pro forma with Linda, just an estimate of what we think costs would be under both scenarios. They're pretty identical as far as cost structure. So while we're doing that, we'll schedule some interviews. We need 15 minutes for each candidate, probably. So as soon as, as soon as you can, Linda.
Okay.
Okay.
Everyone's all right with that? All right, so that's our next step there. Anything else before we go into an executive session? Anything else for public discussion this evening? It's pressing, administration, council members. Donna?
Yes, the chief is on. Are there any statements you'd like to make regarding the incidents of violence over the last few days? People are watching us on Facebook and.
Well, I don't know that I want to put him in the spot, but he's certainly welcome to share any thoughts. Go ahead, chief.
Now, I can provide a briefing that I got from our criminal investigations division. It's a little bit of a watered-down briefing, because we don't want to release certain information about the investigations, but I can give you an idea of what we're looking at, where these threats are emanating from, and where we think they're going to be headed in the near future. So if you bear with me for a minute, I can redo that assessment that was provided by criminal investigations. You know, one thing I did hear, and you'll hear it a lot in this assessment, is social media. Social media is an absolute problem when it comes to these events, not only from perspective of how these things are happening, but how the community is responding to them, and I'll detail some of that here in a minute. But this current run of violence that we're seeing here started with the incident in the ten hundred block of Spring Street on September thirteenth, where two sixteen-year-old males were shot, and one of them was killed in that incident. Later that evening, there was another incident where a male was shot in eleven hundred block of Mall Street, and then the next day, we had the incident in twelve hundred block of Cotton Street, where a female was shot multiple times on her porch. Four days later, the one hundred block of Walnut Street, we had two individuals who were shot there, and then later that evening, in the zero hundred block of North Eleventh Street, we had another shooting, and also after the fact, reported that two other armed street robberies took place at that location. We haven't been able to connect any of the shootings directly to each other, but there are some commonalities with that. Again, that zero hundred block of North Eleventh Street shooting and robberies, we believe, are somewhat connected, not to the other incidents, but just a specific instance in that location, so we're investigating them together. To go along with those violent acts, there's also been a pile of threats or perceived threats at the Central Middle School and high school, as well as in several other school districts in the county, which is why you saw a very public and kind of aggressive approach to making sure that we were on top of the threats at the high school. Again, while these incidents have not been directly connected, at this point, there were overall issues which have led to the spike in violence here in the city. The majority of the violence has revolved around local gang disputes. These are local gangs that we see here in the city that are feuding with each other. They are mostly personal in nature and propagated over social media, and during the last week, several of these disputes took hold. So we're not seeing these aren't, you know, the traditional, what we typically would see in the past, these gang disputes over drug territories or things like that. This is simply individuals who feel like they're being disrespected on social media, taking it to guns. Another factor that we see is the arrest warrant for the individual in the twenty-eighteen gang killing on Mall Street. This arrest warrant appears to have reopened old disputes and caused another spike in violence related to that. Again, another issue we're seeing is a return to school. While we believe in the long term, this will reduce violence, it does appear to have caused a short-term spike with younger offenders. Many of these children have been out of school for extended periods of time, and we've seen conflicts arising as they're brought back together. As these issues arise and are talked about in the schools, they have spiraled into rumor mills, which have led to increased tension and threats at the schools, and split into violence outside of school. Again, main venue for these rumors and all this stuff going back and forth has been social media, which is spreading rapidly throughout our community. The majority of these threats we're seeing today were spawned by a single social media post, which has spread through the community in a matter of hours. We have identified several, not several, but a few things that are hampering our ability to respond to these incidents or get ahead of them. Number one is the lack of school resource officers within the school. We're getting a lot of help from the school district police officers. However, us not having police officers in the school is not allowing us to get ahead of the information, the intel, that we can pass back to our investigators who are investigating these incidents. Another thing, and this has been since the beginning of our efforts to reduce gun violence here in the city of Redding, and actually, well, before that, is the issues of low bail and quick releases. We're seeing a large number of arrests of violent individuals over the last year have released on bail, which has been very little bail or given probation after little to no incarceration. As these offenders are released, arrested and released, they learn what methods we used to catch them and begin to counter those methods. So, I mean, we're seeing individuals who are arrested for multiple gun violations or multiple gun arrests who are being released on no bail. We had an individual who threatened a witness in a murder trial in a courtroom, get released on no bail. So the magisterial district justices, and many of them are from the county, who are given these low bails or no bails, aren't helping us at all. We're seeing a lot of ongoing issues. We have a lot of leads in these cases. We're trying to get ahead of them. We're trying to make the arrests to stop this cycle of violence, but the social media posts that are out there, that are continuing to be out there, are continuing to fuel this hate between these groups, and we're not going to see an end to this until something breaks that cycle.
All right, thank you, chief. Very interesting. Questions, anyone? Comments? We don't want to get too deep into questions, but surface-level questions. Go ahead, Marcia.
And thank you very much, chief. I think you gave us a lot to think about. What I think is important now, and I want to be able to say this for what's being planned on Wednesday, this is so detailed and has so many different moving parts, as Jeff might say, that I don't believe the time with all our other priorities that we have on Wednesday, that we have enough time to really delve into this the way it needs to be. I think we can begin an initial discussion, but I want to be very careful as we look at a priority conference summit that was set up to deal with all the priorities that we need to look at throughout the city, that we don't get short-shifted on this issue by having it tried to be stuffed into a limited amount of time, and I'm hoping my fellow council members concur with me. I think we need to have a separate time set aside to deal with this issue, and there's, again, multiple different strategies that are evidence-based, that I think the Redding Police Department has already started to initiate. Things need to happen in the school and community setting. So I would really, and I know the mayor isn't on the call, I think the message needs to be delivered to him, I would call him directly to say that, that let's not try to turn what was to be a council administration summit into a crime summit. I don't think that's going to work. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate those comments, counselor, and the managing director is on the call, and I can tell you that we will be discussing this on Wednesday. We don't have to go into finite details on it, but we do need to paint some broad strokes, because this is a community call to action. We need assistance from council members. We need to identify community resources, community leaders, individuals, faith-based community members as well. This needs to be an all-hands-on-deck effort. If it is the desire of the body to hold a separate meeting, I am more than certain that the mayor would entertain that, so thank you.
And I want to respond to that, because this is not the first rodeo for this particular people on council to go through this, and we did set a designated time period to do this. So again, initial discussions, but let's not try to address everything that you mentioned, at what time we have available on Wednesday night. That won't do it justice. So I think we can say overarching what we need to do, but if we're going to be using all of our assets to mobilize around this problem, we need to have a comprehensive strategy that doesn't occur within a three-hour window of time that also has a lot of other city issues that need to be discussed.
Donna?
And I think to follow up on that, if we truly want to do a comprehensive, comprehensive crime summit, then we have to call in other partners besides ourselves. We have to call in a school that supplies your hesitancy for school resource officers. We have to call in the sheriff's department, we have to call in county probation, judiciary, all the folks in the county that, you know, sheriff's office. We have to call in some of the helping organizations, social service organizations that are reaching out and trying to work with troubled youth. Meaning, you know, many of you know much more about this than I do. I was asked to stop at someone's home today, and I spent time with her talking about this, you know, a local minister who does a lot of outreach, and, you know, just hearing how one-on-one-on-one she's dealing with things was both encouraging and eye-opening, and we see that there are partners out there who maybe aren't super-recognized that are making strides, but I think if we want to do what the county once called a crime summit that many of us went to back in twenty thirteen, twenty twelve, Linda, you might remember when that was, it was, it was including everyone, and included state police, it included, you know, federal-level folks. I mean, if we truly want to do this, because I think our residents really, really deserve our having that kind of significant, specific attention to the issue, just as residents feeling, and other cities feeling the same kind of challenges we are, but it has been a long time since those partnership groups were convened together, and it comes more than simple talk, and simple, you know, recounting of what has occurred, but what can logistically and realistically we can do going forward. Chief, that, I really appreciate your response, and I really learned a lot just from what you're saying here, but, you know, whatever, whatever we can do, pulling everything together, it has to be more than just us, and I concur that, yeah, we can start the conversation on a very, you know, probably superficial but not visceral level on Wednesday, but we should follow up with a major partnership.
Yeah, and I think we've discussed this with the managing director, and I think the thing that we really need is specifically from council, look, I'll be straight up honest with you, we don't need another crime summit, we don't need to sit down with the state police and the sheriff and the feds. I meet with them on a regular basis. We know how to fight crime, we know how to take care of the law enforcement side of this. What we need is action on the folks who like to talk a lot, and actually roll up their sleeves and get out there in the streets and help us, because we need to identify those community members who are interested and are going to actually get work done when it comes to violence reduction and crime reduction in the city. We got the law enforcement end covered. We need that community piece, and we're trying to outreach. I was at a meeting last week with members of the administration and councilwoman Ventura, where we had some positive conversations about things to do that we're going to follow up on, but there ain't no time for a summit. We don't need a summit. We know how to fight crime. We need folks to roll up their sleeves, stop talking, and get to work.
Yeah, and I was thinking that, chief, you know, I don't want to be in the middle of the mechanics, you guys know how to do that, if there are specific things that we can help with and get others to help with, and that's what we need to know. It's an extremely frustrating situation that these young people are fighting over the internet, and then they're taking it out on each other. I mean, there's a lot of count, where are the parents? Where's the aunts? Where's the uncles? When they see these kids upset, like, because they're looking on their phone, they need to get involved, there needs to be some kind of intervention, there needs to be ways of, you know, you can't let every little comment force it to a gun and to killing somebody. I mean, it's just crazy. So the schools, the community, we've said it time and again, the police cannot be the eyes for a hundred and ten thousand people. People have got to step up and police their house, their block, their neighborhood, and when they see people, young kids getting caught up because of what somebody said over the internet, my goodness, calm them down, redirect them, get them into, you know, life is more than what somebody says about.
People who are willing to do that for them, Jeff. This woman I talked to today does it all the time, but she's one person.
Yeah, the police can't solve this, they need the community to solve it. They could, like the chief said, they've got crime down, they know how to handle this. The community's got to step up, and these kids, you know, there's got to be leaders amongst the children. I would go to the youth crime commission, I'm sorry, the council youth commission as well, and see if they can come up with some solutions. I mean, I would start with the kids, they need to get in the middle of this and figure it out. I mean, they talk to each other. I don't know a lot of these kids, but the kids do. They need a network, they need an outlet. If guys are fighting on the internet, enough people see it, stop it. Go ahead, Lucy.
Yeah, that's, I'm really glad that you mentioned the youth commission. The youth commission has, they are active, they are engaged, they are good leaders, young leaders in our community, they have identified crime and safety as an issue that they're concerned about, and I know they have been reaching out to the chief, so they would be excellent leaders to start to work on some of the, on the ground.
Yeah, that's what we need. We need them to build some networks and some ideas and some thoughts, but they're helping the police.
Exactly what the chief is saying. I have seen in the south side of District One, everything he's saying work. When you have the trust of the community members block by block, and they can work together and, you know, stand up against those who, you know, are creating unlawful acts, it does work. And so we just, like you said, we don't need to talk about it, we just need to go and find those individuals of our communities and of our wards and of our districts that are willing to be part of this team to say, we're not tolerating this anymore, and we want to be a safe and happy community. I've seen, I've seen it work with the police in District One over the past couple of years, so I think we all need to just rally together and make that happen.
I think that's perfect. So we'll use that as a starting block, and I think council members, as the administration has requested, any reference to community groups, individuals, et cetera, but we'll try to energize this youth commission as well to play a leadership role in assisting the police with the youth that are getting caught up in, you know, I'm not going to call them names, just in behaviors they don't need to be involved with, they can use their time much more productively, so they just need to be shown that, so. All right, any other comments on this issue? I don't want to.
Johani here, Jeff. So, so I just still believe, yeah, you know, and I agree with chief, like, we got to get to work, not a lot of our seats, and get out into the community and make some things happen, however, who takes the initiative? Who leads that call to action? What is the plan? Because there's a number of organizations, a number of groups, a number of vested community members who care, who want to help, but they don't know how, right? Also, we have to establish trust, right? Also with our police department and our community, right? They want, they have to feel comfortable, they can make a call, and that it's not going to come back to bite them in the butt because they quote-unquote snitched. Do you know what I'm saying? Like, I want, we need a plan so we can make sure and ensure to people that they have to do their part, and they have to help contribute to eliminating this violence and reducing crime, especially amongst our young people. But it takes, it takes all of us, but again, who takes the lead? Who holds our community accountable? Like, how do we do that?
They're all good topics, conversation for Wednesday. We look forward to that robust discussion.
All right, it's a good question, Johani, and I think there's some, you know, maybe the youth commission could help us in establishing some confidential outlets for the youth, and, you know, there are some available for the adults, but maybe we can do a better job promoting them, you know, so people feel safe, but the community has to get more involved at the end of the day, especially in the oversight of these younger children, and young adults, I don't want to call them children, but young adults, I mean, they have their whole lives ahead of them, they need to know that little decisions will change their whole life, and they don't need to get, my goodness, if I got caught up every time somebody called me a name, I'd be in a lot of trouble, but I get it, when you're sixteen, you don't want to hear that stuff, but, you know, that's where we need leadership in the city. So Lucy, and I think, I think the youth commission can be pivotal here, and we have to further that discussion.
Jeff?
Yes.
Okay, and I believe what Johani's saying is important as far as coordination, because as we are even talking here, we're not all aware of, and I'm fortunate, maybe, to be in a position that I have some greater awareness of everything that's going on with the social service system and some of the other community organizations, but we all have a piece of information. My concern is that we don't go into this with a model or a leadership in place, and instead bring together the partners and let them decide who needs to take the lead. I don't think as city government, we should be doing that. We are part of the partners in the problem, but unless we want to designate ourselves in a leadership role and designate a staff position that's willing to pull everything together, I don't think as the city government, we are in the position to take the lead. Now, and that might be a discussion as we bring together all the partners. There was an organization that wasn't existent years ago, under the auspices of St. Joseph's Hospital, the Redding Youth Violence Prevention Coalition, and they, they bring people together, they no longer are functioning. So again, we're back to where we might have been when we had our last planning session. So let's not get ahead of ourselves and say who should be doing what until we bring all the partners together, and they all have a chance to have some input as to who might be doing what, but I can tell you, people are doing a lot of good work out there in the community. I think Donna alluded to that, a lot of folks are, and we just need to be able to recognize the work that they're doing and how everything can fit together.
The only thing I can offer is my community response coordinator, Lieutenant Lance Loos, he is very engaged in the community, he wants to be very engaged in the community of these groups. So, you know, again, we don't have time to talk about who's going to take the lead, who's going to do this, he's a leader, he'll take the charge of this, I can guarantee that, and I'll assist him with that. So any organizations, groups out there that want to get involved to reduce violence in our city, will take the lead on it, and he will be more than happy to meet with those folks. Uh, and, and he will be more than happy to meet with those folks. I'll meet with those folks. I have some meetings coming up from individuals I met the past week. Um, and, you know, it, again, like, I, I don't want to sound like a broken record here, but the, the time to talk is over. It's time to get some work done. And until somebody else can be identified that wants to take the lead on this, we'll, we'll take care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Okay, any additional public comments tonight by members of council with the administration? Any hot issues before we go into an executive session? All right, we're going to clear out the room for an executive session. We're just covering one matter and, uh, hopefully it'll be brief. Linda, let us know when we're not recording and the room is cleared out.
No, this will be it. Yes. Yes, thank you. We've got to get this fixed. No, he can't, because he's. Yeah, we tried to get him to dial in. I tried to get him to dial in, but that didn't work out. Because you're not going on Zoom. I've told you that a billion times.
Now, 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 let's.
Technology can get the best of us.
Should I drive over to Strats?